At 910 South Mountain Road, Fruit Heights, Utah 84037. I'd like to welcome all of you here tonight. We are going to begin with Pledge of Allegiance, which is going to be held or it's going to be led by Gary Anderson, and we're going to have an opening ceremony, opening prayer by George Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
As friends, neighbors, we come before thee and take this opportunity to express gratitude to the wonderful place that we live, the wonderful country that we have, and to those leaders and citizens that we have that make a difference here. We pray as we have our meeting this evening that we will work with one another as friends and neighbors and that we can represent those that have put their trust in us. And for these things we pray, in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, George. Thank you, Gary. 1.2, roll call. Brandon?
Councilmember Diane Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Gary Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Florence Sadler is excused. Councilmember George Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Eileen Moss.
Here.
Mayor John Pullman.
Here. Thank you very much. Item number 1.3, we set aside three minutes of our agenda at every council meeting to have a city council training, which is performed by one of the city council members. Tonight is going to be done by Eileen Moss. You've got three minutes.
Thank you. So I thought it might be appropriate to spend just a couple of minutes talking about the legalities of the general plan as we are currently undertaking a rewrite of the general plan. And so at such time that the Planning Commission gets the general plan, then the Planning Commission is obligated to hold at least one public hearing on that. And then they send it to the city council. The city council may make, what it says here is the city council may make revisions to the proposed general plan or amendments that it considers appropriate. So, and then they're not, the city council is not required to have a public hearing, but may choose to have a public hearing. And then the general plan will be adopted by ordinance. And in addition to the general plan, there will be official maps with that. And it says in here that the city council can make the general plan mandatory through ordinance, meaning if we are concerned about what is potentially going to go on with the demands by the state legislature that we, it says incorporate at least three of the suggestions in the state code for encouraging moderate income housing in our community, we may have to consider making some of our general plan mandatory through ordinance so that we actually follow the other parts of state law that requires us to incorporate some affordable housing issues. That's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Eileen.
Does the state specify how large a city has to be to meet those requirements?
It does, actually. The state says that a town does not, but a city does. And we are...
Now, does the state define a city?
It's by population. So, we are a city. We are a city. So, for instance, another town that I, town that I follow is Mantaway, and they've always gone by the town of Mantaway, but they actually, their population has increased, and so the city has upped them into the city category. This, no, the state has upped them into the city to be a town versus, it's like, I don't remember.
Under 1,000.
I think it's 1,000.
Under 1,000?
Correct.
Wow.
1,000 to 10,000 is a class five city. We're a class five.
Eileen, thank you very much. City council, have we, have all of you had a chance to review the agenda tonight? And do we have any conflicts of interest to declare?
No.
Not seeing or hearing any, we're going to move over to item number three, which is a public comment period. We set this time aside on every one of our agendas to allow residents to present things to the city. We ask you to keep it to three minutes. Would you mind coming up and just saying your name in the microphone? Thank you so much, Ms.
I'm June Taylor, resident of Fruit Heights. And everybody may know this information, but I do not, so I wanted to ask a couple of questions. I noticed that the pedestrian tunnel is really come along. I also noticed a lot of graffiti on the tunnel that you've walked through already. Do we know when the construction of the trail will begin? Do we have a set date yet?
So the trail, do you mean?
The nature trail? That will...
That will connect the tunnel up to Green Road?
Yeah.
We do not yet.
Okay. All right. And so we don't know when construction will begin, because there's a lot of other questions like, well, let me put it this way, is it within the next year or two?
It would be nice to, yes.
But we don't know.
Are you speaking about having the trail connect from the Gailey Trail going east or going through the tunnel up east?
Well, the tunnel goes both ways.
We live right by...
Well, I mean, the trail, are you talking about?
Well, we live right by the creek and the trail will come that way.
On the east side or the west side?
On the east or the west side. On the east side.
Right, so there are no plans?
There's nothing right now.
Or a trail from Gailey Park East yet, right?
Well, let me restate that. There are plans that as you exit the east side of the tunnel heading east, you will then turn left, north, and go up to Green Road. That's the only plan.
Okay.
And currently, the city does not own the property. UDOT owns that. So when UDOT turns that over to us, then there will be some work done after UDOT turns that property over to us.
Which property?
Where the tunnel currently exits on the east side of Iowa 89.
Oh, oh. Okay, so it'll, there'll be demarcation that shows how to get up to Green?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. There will be, there will be a trail and there is, yes, yes. We've talked about that with UDOT. They're aware of what needs to happen.
Good, and it no longer crosses over my property, right?
Not right now. No.
No, there are no plans for that. The plan now is to come out of the tunnel and access up to Green Road.
The general plan that is currently in place does suggest...
But we do not own that property.
We don't have any, we have not talked about any plans. Correct.
Well, we had talked with the mayor extensively about it, so...
The possibility.
Oh.
Right?
Yes.
The possibility. Okay, good. That's good to hear. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. It's good seeing you. Come on up.
Eric Hardison, Fruit Heights, I just spoke. Excuse me. Eric Hardison. Just to make the community aware, this is typical season for us when we get transients, vagrants, and mischief makers that come through and affect our property. We have an outbuilding on the hollow, and, you know, we do our due diligence on it as best we can. We're worried about liability, the kids that could get up on our roof on a high bar, and it's pretty dangerous stuff. It kicked in a few of our doors. It's got to the point where we can't store our goods in our own shed, so we have to stuff it in our workshop, which makes it hard to work in there. Just to let the community know, we're not going to report all these incidents to the sheriff. We got a report from Caswell City, and I'm working on getting the report from the sheriff about the quantity of activity. But just with the Caswell City report, you know, it's substantial on the, we all understand there's, there's no lights, but the, you know, people do transient the west side. I just wanted the greater community to know how we're affected. You know, the talk of the trail, you know, it's, it seems like a wonderful idea in a lot of ways, but the consideration for those two of us that have outbuildings there is really what we're looking for, to protect us from liability particularly and, you know, the dangers to the kids that want to cross the line. You know, we almost feel compelled, we have to put up a fence and things like that, which isn't very good looking for a nature trail. But there's a lot of considerations, and when the plans move forward, we'd like to, you know, work with the city and see how we can just make it right for everyone, but also protect our interests. You know, we've even thought of just parceling out that property and incorporating it separately so we could have liability on that piece of land only. But still, the real idea would be, you know, that causes a lot of, you know, we have to work with the bank. For us, it's an expensive piece of property, and we have to give them something. That becomes problematic. But, you know, safety for the kids and liability for us and then for the good of the community. You know, I've also, you know, suggested, you know, if the trail was on the opposite side of the river, it'd be really hard for a mischief maker to say, hey, we had to cross the river, go over your fence to get to your barn. So there's a lot of different ideas, but I can see this with the size of the tunnel. Oh, time's up, but the size of the tunnel, you know, you want some vehicle traffic, and so we understand the size of the trail would need to be sufficient. Anyways, that's my three minutes. Thank you.
Eric, thank you so much.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. Appreciate your support.
Anyone else? Thank you so much. We're going to move over to item number four, which is special presentation. We have the youth city council representatives. Would you mind coming up and saying your name?
I am Lucy Groberg.
And I'm Adeline Heimstra. And we are members of the YCC, here to give an update on our current projects. So our last project was the Easter egg hunt, and it went really well.
Excuse me, can you speak a little louder for our recorder? Thank you.
It went really well. We had a great turnout. Our prizes were really good. We think the kids really enjoyed it. And then we also wanted to give a special thanks to the sheriff's department for providing some really cool prizes and also safety surrounding that event. Our upcoming projects are going to be putting flags on the veterans' graves on May 27, and then also we'll be putting up banners for Veterans Day on May 28. And then at our last meeting, we were asked to come up with some slogans for water-saving awareness since we're in a drought. So we came up with a list of about 25 of them, and we'll pass them out to the council, and then I think we have two extra copies if anyone else wants to see them. A couple more of our upcoming projects is the Fourth of July Parade and Founder's Day in August. And we just had a couple of questions about that for the council. One was, will we be able to throw candy at the Fourth of July Parade?
As far as I know, yes. I will ask to verify that tomorrow at our meeting, but last time it seemed like nobody was saying it wasn't a thing, so, but I will verify.
Cool, thank you. And then also, our other question was, would the city like us to organize the 5K for Founder's Day?
Yes, we would.
Okay.
Denise and Jerry LaBaron are the chairpeople again, and so if you have any questions, you can contact them or contact me. Thank you.
Of course. Yep, that's our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy. Thank you, Ellen. You guys are awesome. Moving over to item number 5.1, which is review, discuss, approve, deny the resolution 2022-004 culinary water restrictions. Brandon Green?
So at the last council meeting, we were asked to prepare some documents for water conservation and whatnot, so we have been working hard to present those documents. So we've got a resolution, if I'm not mistaken, and also a...
Proclamation.
Proclamation.
Needs to be spelled properly. Sorry.
I thought I fixed, did I not fix it? I thought I tried to fix it. Anyway, sorry to interrupt you, Brandon. I may have fixed that.
We can make, I don't know why it doesn't, yeah.
Anyway, I think that's, yep, done.
It is fixed. Thanks, Ellen.
Are there any questions from the council? Have you had a chance to review the resolution? I thought it was really well done. Thank you, Darren. Thank you, Brandon, for putting it together.
Are there any concerns, you know, as we... Sorry, what's that?
Do you mind going over the limits of the...
Of the ordinance?
Tier levels.
Okay, let me, I'm just working on pulling that up, I'm sorry.
It's on the screen, if you want to look up at the screen, if you can see that far.
I can't see that far.
Good luck.
I don't...
Glad I'm not the only one.
So, the purpose for the ordinance is to put into place what has already been requested of us by our water service providers, which is Weber Basin, who provides water to the city of Fruit Heights, as well as Hates Creek and Benchland Irrigation, being that it has been already declared by the state of Utah, Weber Basin, and the local water districts that we are in a state of emergency in a drought. We are adopting an ordinance that further outlines what the city will do if we see violations occurring. And these line up consistently with what is going on within the district. So we aren't doing anything different than what's already been asked of us by the state of Utah, Weber Basin Water Conservancy District, Hates Creek Irrigation, and Benchland Irrigation. So it just, it just makes it legal for us to also enforce these requirements through an ordinance. There's also the resolution and the... I keep forgetting the word.
Proclamation.
Proclamation.
Brandon?
Yes.
My question is, have we checked with our attorney to make sure that this is a legal way to assess a fine?
This right here? This is, yes, this is a, now, we will be the third line of defense. It will be, this fine will be assessed, this very same fine will be assessed by Weber Basin and Hates Creek before it gets to us. So if, if they're not complying with Weber Basin and they're not complying with Hates Creek, then the city would come in. But I don't think we're going to get to that point where we are going to have to assess a fine. I think it will stop with Weber Basin before it, yeah. But just simply stating that, yes, we can, we are in agreement with...
Just wanted to make sure.
No, appreciate it.
So just one fine will be imposed, not a fine by all of those three institutions?
If you're watering on Tuesday and you get a notice, that's your warning. If you water Wednesday, you'll pay the $250 fine, $100, huh? Or $100 fine, sorry. And then if you're still watering the next day, that'll be $100 plus $250, so we're at $350.
So when you say next day, you mean next day that you're not supposed to be watering?
Yeah.
Because the next day you would legally be able to water, right?
So, Brandon?
Yes.
So this is applying to the Fruit Heights culinary water?
Well, so it also applies to culinary water, because technically, we are not supposed to be using culinary water in our sprinkling systems. We don't have an ordinance that allows culinary water for secondary purposes.
So...
But...
So are we, my question is...
Yes.
Are we trying to enforce Weber's policies as well or just Fruit Heights City culinary water?
We do have a small secondary water district...
Yes.
Up along the east bench.
Correct.
So this would also apply to those water users up there.
So...
And we are also enforcing culinary water usage.
So this is an ordinance that we're looking at that will apply to culinary water usage within the city of Fruit Heights? Is that correct?
And secondary water usage.
And Weber, Hates Creek?
We also have a small secondary water district that we have to enforce.
But that's culinary.
Hates Creek has, no, it's secondary water.
Okay, yeah, you're right.
East bench, yeah.
But we're not trying to enforce Hates Creek policy?
Hates Creek has their own set of rules that look almost identical to these.
Right, and they will enforce those, and...
And Weber Basin will also enforce.
And Weber Basin. So what I'm trying to say is, we're not, we're not trying to enforce everything on everybody. We have, as you said, we've got some other people with things to do.
So just so you know, Weber Basin will be sending people out, because they distribute the majority of the water to the secondary water suppliers and Fruit Heights City.
Right.
But they have hired individuals to patrol the use of water when it shouldn't be used, and there will be fines.
And so they will be probably the ordinance...
They'll be the enforcers.
Yeah.
But we also, we have also been asked by Weber Basin to also help enforce, because they can't, you know, they're like anybody else, they can't be everywhere, all the time. So we, as a city, have been asked to also help with the conservation effort.
Is this just for this year or...
If the city...
Just for this current year.
If the city notices that Hates Creek water is being used inappropriately, is the city going to assess the fine on the utility bill, or is the city going to call Hates Creek and say, hey, you should enforce this?
We are going to call Hates Creek and have Hates Creek enforce it. If Hates Creek fails to enforce it, we will call Weber Basin. Weber Basin will then request that it be enforced. If, for some reason, neither one of those individual or districts enforce it, Fruit Heights City has the ability to enforce, but we would be the last...
We adopt this.
Yes, we would be the last.
Okay, thank you.
Unless it's culinary water.
Unless it's culinary.
And then you're first, and then you're in first position if it is culinary?
Yes.
Or if it is part of our city irrigation system?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Yes, they have.
I have received, I have received a letter from Hates Creek that actually outlined...
If you haven't received it...
It looks very similar to this.
Yeah, yes. And you haven't seen it yet?
Well, I...
Because it's out.
Because I have water, I have water shares too, and it looks, yeah, it looks very, very similar.
I'd be happy to get you in contact with this.
I think there's other questions. If somebody is violating, and let's say it's their second, so there's a fine involved, will they get a fine from the water district and the city or either or?
That's what we were just discussing.
Yeah, I was...
The fine would come from, depending on what the water usage is, where it's at, it would come from the district from where the fine occurs. So...
So you're probably Hates Creek, so you would be fined by Hates Creek, but if they don't do it, then Hates Creek is getting, we were from Water Basin, so Weber Basin, so Weber Basin would then come in.
Brandon?
But it's all an effort to get people to reduce... To reduce their water usage. We're not out to get the fines. We're just trying to create some teeth into the warning that we're in a severe drought, so, right, and reduction, tremendous.
Thank you so much for working on this. I read it, looked really great. George, you have a question?
I do have one question, and I don't know if you know the answer to this. Over the last year or so, we've been partnering with the water districts to get out those watering meters, and if I remember right, there was a...
Sprinkler timers?
The watering timers, that there was a line in those agreements that allowed them to get the data from those watering units. Are those being used for observing and for these fines or not? It shouldn't say fine, but no. It's obfuscated. The information on that is conglomerated into the city. So let's say there's 300 devices out there, they average all the usage between 300 and 100. So they're not saying that, George Ray, you have that device, we're going to now monitor you, no.
So Weber Basin won't see individuals, so they won't be able to use those?
No.
For good or bad?
No. Well, the good is they get, they use the data to see how much savings is being generated, but they're not using it to go out and find people who are...
Right. No, and I'm with you, but in this concept, you know, good or bad, they would be able to use a timer, say, oh, this timer's running at 3:00 a.m. when, on a day they're not supposed to. So instead of paying somebody to drive around the neighborhood, we would use a technology to do that same work, but then we all start to stress about data that they could see.
Right.
So I just wondered if they were already, if they were going to use that.
So they won't use that, but they will be able to see, hey, we've got 300 devices, and 275 of the 300 are still watering every, every other day.
And so they will be able to kind of narrow it down to go...
So they'll say, what's going on? Like, if 75% of your city is still watering when they shouldn't be, what else can we do? What more can we do?
Great question. So I would, I would look for a motion on item number 5.1.
I'll move on that. I would, I move that we approve the resolution 2022-004 culinary water restrictions.
Thank you, Diane. I appreciate that. Do I have a second?
I second that.
I have a second from George. Any further questions or discussions on this motion that's on the table? It's a resolution, so it does not need to be roll call, correct?
Correct.
Great. So all in favor of approving resolutions 22, 2022-004 culinary water restrictions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item number 5.2, review, discuss, approve, deny proclamation 2022-001 declaring scarcity of water. Brandon, do you want to discuss that proclamation?
Proclamation is similar to the resolution. It's just saying that the mayor and council are in support of the drought conditions, and it's just a proclamation.
Great. Do I have a motion for this?
I'll move, again.
I have a motion for...
To approve the proclamation 2022-001 declaring scarcity of water.
Awesome. So I have a motion to approve it by Diane. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Gary Anderson. Any further questions or discussions on this motion? All for approving the proclamation 2022-001 declaring scarcity of water, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item number 5.3, review, discuss, approve, deny 2022 culinary water restrictions. Brandon Green?
So this one, this one deals directly with the culinary watering and watering for yards, where the resolution dealt with mostly secondary, but also had some items in there regarding culinary water usage, where most of our city is on culinary water. We, as a city, what's that? Well, most of it's on irrigation, yes. All of our residents are in culinary.
There you go.
As a city, we have been asked by Weber Basin to reduce our culinary water consumption by, is it 10%? By 10%. So as a city, what we're concerned with is residents saying, I can only water one day a week with my secondary, so I'm going to water another day a week with my culinary. We only purchase so much water, and if people start using their culinary water to water their lawns and their shrubs and stuff with, we could very well be in a situation where we go over our allotted water, culinary water purchase. And if that is the case, it is a 200, is it a 200? It's a, it's a huge fine. I can't remember the size, and I shouldn't say that, but it is a large fine if we go over.
An acre foot, it looks like. And once you get that acre foot, it could be one gallon to that acre foot.
For the city.
For the city.
Is that over and above the shares that we own? Or is that over and above the 10% reduction that we were asked?
But you had to submit to Weber Basin what our usage has been, and it's my understanding that they're taking what our usage has been historically and reducing it 10%. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah.
But the fine is not assessed until we go over the top of the shares that we own?
Yes.
Okay. Great, thank you.
But we don't want to get there, so that's why we have.
And if people are watering outside, we may get there.
Yes, yeah, if, if people aren't careful and if we don't take this seriously, you know, we didn't, we didn't design our city to, to use culinary for irrigation purposes. So our, our storage tanks that we have for culinary water hold the water for that purpose, and, and, and we got to be careful. So this is just simply saying that if, if we find people that are using our culinary water inappropriately or not, not in a manner that would be okay, that we also have the ability to go in and, and stop that. And it lists 10 things, I believe.
Yes.
10 items. And then, again, the fee schedule is that of what is already being enforced in the, in the secondary water district, so it would be the same. Are there any questions related to this document?
So we discussed this last city council, this is the idea that we had, but we didn't really have it written down. This is the formalized idea that you and Darren had discussed and you're bringing it to the council, is that correct?
That's correct.
And again, the fee is assessed, this is for culinary, this is not secondary. If culinary is being used outdoors and they're watering secondary, they could presumptively, they could get a set fine, they could get assessed a fine from Weber Basin, and they could get with this, get assessed a fine by Fruit Heights City.
Correct.
Okay.
Because of two infractions.
Different water uses could be used for the same cause or case.
And I think you mentioned last time that the, the way you would monitor that is checking the water bills because you can tell if people are using more.
We would, and you know, our approach is, let's, let's let the people know that they're overusing and if it continues, then we would, then we would begin imposing fines. But we do have the ability to look back historically and see what water usage is and if it, if it looks like it's, it's, it's increased due to watering outdoors, then we would address it with those residents.
So I just want to make it very clear and very, make the statement out loud that we as a city want to stay in item number one. We want to advise, 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 let them know we are not wanting to generate revenue from this. This is not a revenue generation proposal, and I think if it crosses that boundary, you will hear from the city council, because.
We, we actually intend to do that.
We, we. What a great idea.
It is great, it's a great idea and that, and that has to do some of what, with the city, what the U City Council passed out a little bit earlier. So we actually are coming up with a plan to, to do some community outreach.
I love this.
Very similar to what you're just saying.
Turn off the drought, we're in it, no, turn off the spout, we're in a drought. That's one of my favorite.
I just, I just want to add a, a applause to that because a couple of years ago, I got notified, notified when, from the city that my water usage was high and it turned out I had a leak in the front lawn, and so I was really glad that they had a way of measuring that because I didn't know it was leaking.
Yeah, that's great. So thank you, Brandon, thank you for putting that together. Thank you, Darren, as well. I would look for a, a motion on this, item number 5.3. I move to approve the 2022 Culinary Water Restrictions for Fruit Heights City. Thank you, George. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Eileen. Any further discussions on the motion that's on the table? Any questions? All those in favor of approving 2022 Culinary Water Restrictions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much for making that clear.
Mayor, can we, can we discuss our, our carrots now or do you want to do it under, under, when we get to council reports?
Let's, council reports, is that right? Let's get, yeah. Let's go to item number 5.4. This is budgetary time. The budget is put together in a tentative form. There's going to be a lot of moving pieces on this, and we've put this on the agenda to start discussing, asking questions, making sure that all of you are familiar with this. So we have a line item, which is item number 5.4, review, the tentative budget, review, any, or ask, preview and discussions. So we set aside this time on the agenda to discuss anything that you may want to. Before we get into it, do we have any direct questions or specific questions that you would like to have addressed by staff? Okay?
I'm finding my question.
Because you and Flo are new, I know that Brandon has reached out to you, I hope you take advantage of that time. You know, get to know it, to understand it. That is your primary responsibility on city council is to understand the numbers and understand the budget. So I would, I would encourage you to take as much time as you can to understand every single line item and, and ask the, the questions that you need to. I'm not just throwing this at you saying good luck. I, if you have questions, I would love to spend time with you as well. I think this is very important and this is how we are, we practice what we, we practice what we preach with transparency. This is not something that we ever have in closed doors. This is as open as we can and we, you, as a city council, have to sound accountable to the appropriation of these funds.
And how granular is it expected to us to know the budget?
So I'll tell you that when we budget for, let's say, a lawnmower or a truck, and it's in the budget and the questions aren't asked and the debate is not had when the budget is approved, that, that, when the staff come to us and say, okay, I'm going to go buy this truck, and we're like, whoa, 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 why are you buying this truck? The time to have the discussion is before we approve the budget and ask the questions and the challenge, why are we putting this much money into this fund? What are we going to do with this? I wouldn't say it's absolutely granule, but I, I will tell you that that is your accountability component. That is how people will hold you accountable. Hey, you've got $10,000 in this fund, why are you putting so much money to this fund? Question. I don't actually know the question. Answer that. Does that make sense? So ask the questions now. You know, Eileen has been through this a number of times. Diane has been through this a few times. Gary's been through this a few times. So I want to make sure that we have the discussions and they're not done any other time than right here at an open public meeting. Does that make sense? But if you call me, like, this is important information, this is stuff that we need to, we need to do. Brandon, are, there are things that, and Darren, are there items on this that you would like to present to council?
I think if we were to just talk about maybe the highlights of what you will expect in this upcoming budget, which would be the 2022, 2023 budget year. Now, remember, the budget starts July 1 and it goes through June 30 of 2023, so that's our fiscal year. We have quite a year coming up. We've got several projects. We've got water line replacement projects that we have budgeted for. We were able to get that, the, the ARPA grant for a million dollars that'll replace several linear feet of aging infrastructure. We've also got budgeted a project up on Quell Ridge, which will redo stormwater, water, curb gutter and asphalt. That's a big project that we have been working on for a couple of years now and, and now we're to the point where we can, we can make that happen. We've got some road projects that we'll be doing. We've got some curb and gutter projects on the west side of Nichols Road and 89. We've got a section of curb that has to be completed from where UDOT has finished to where we need to take it down near the golf course. We were awarded a, a grant to do some sidewalk between Raymond Road and Country Road to finish up that section of sidewalk there so that kids can travel safely to school without walking in the street. So all of these things are in this budget. We've also requested or will be requesting the purchase of some equipment, a mini excavator is what we're looking at this year, and then also the purchase of some additional vehicles. So that's, that's in the budget. We've got some trail improvements that we'd like to make. You know, as, as we're talking Bonneville Shoreline Trail and, and trails up, up above us here, looking to make some trail improvements, so there will be some money allocated for that purpose. We're also going to try and, and put some money, allocate some money for maybe the first phase of potentially a cemetery. That still has to be kind of worked out. We've got some decisions we got to make that will be coming to the council here in the next meeting, where we have to make a big decision on what we're going to do with a, a well. And I don't want to get into the, I don't want to get into any discussion on that because we're not prepared to present anything to the council at this time. But there's going to be some decisions that we are going to need some direction from you, the council, on some of the things that, and, and I don't know, Mayor, have we, have you shared the, the grants that we've received over the, over the years?
So I will just jump in and say a number of things that you were outlining in that a couple minutes. A lot of those are actually being funded from grants that we've been awarded. The trail improvement, Bonneville Shoreline, all that is going to be funded from grants that we've been awarded. The water project, that's going to be funded through grant money. It's actually really nice that our city has been so forth, has been out in front trying to get these grants. I think just about every few weeks I get another call or email from Brandon about another grant opportunity that he's, he's working on. I think in the last, is it five years, Brandon? Last four and a half years?
Yeah.
The city has brought in close to $5 million in, in outside funding from grants through federal, state, outdoor recreation. So when we have a budget of $1.2 million, in five years, we've brought in $5.5 million and we're looking hopefully for one that we'll know here very soon of another maybe million dollars. So there's a lot of really, really cool things, and I will say that Brandon, Darren, Brandon Jones, Jeff Euler, all of you guys have been doing a very good job of making sure that all of these massive projects that we have are coming to us and we have the opportunity to do them because of the outside funding, because of the grant opportunities that we've been applying for. If you notice that, that the new roofs on all of our buildings, all that was done from grant money.
And the insurance.
And insurance, but a lot of it was FEMA. You know, there's a lot of money sloshing around the federal government and the state government, and we've been able to, to take as much as we could to, to fund a lot of these things that we have coming up. This doesn't mean that we are spending anything that we don't have. I've made sure and worked with Brandon very closely that every dollar that comes in is very closely appropriated and it's not going to any other funds or any other projects. So there are going to be some decisions that we as a council need to make that, on how to use some of these funds. But with all that, the mini excavator obviously is coming from our, our capital funds. Are we going to do the backhoe recycle? That has been a cost generation for us.
Well, it's not a backhoe, it's.
It's a front end loader.
Front loader, yeah.
The loader this year, they would love us to trade him, but they currently will not be able to.
Of course they would like us to trade it in.
Yes, they, they would love that because they just don't have it. He says, and so we started having equipment, well, students, stuff like that. We sent increase on the equipment since November. They just got a letter from CAT saying expect a 10% to 20% increase by the end of summer. So we've been looking to say, well, we've been hanging on to our mini for, since 2006, I think. And there, we were looking to just buy a mini excavator set. I think we showed a lot of wash here, it was like $78,000 this year, this year.
Does, does skipping a year on that exchange spoil the deal? Or can we jump back into it next year or not?
We can go back into it, it, just depending where our hours and that, it could be cost.
Still a good deal.
This year, we, he said, the way it is, if they could get one, they would, they would try to make a wash.
That's great.
These costs this year is $205,000. We would pay about $100,000 for it.
Yeah.
So the increase is like a huge increase at the moment right now. And it's just like, we've been told we won't get any, any more doors this year. So unless, unless something comes up. And I'm thinking everything that they're getting is already pre-sold.
Yeah, so we can't, we can't give it up.
Yeah, so I, I, I'm still saying, just to figure out which way is the best way for the city to go. And hopefully I'll ask them for members in the next few or two.
Great, thank you, Darren. Brandon, is there anything else you want to highlight on this budget? This is just the time to discuss and present some things.
Yeah, I just want to get it, we're not adopting anything tonight. I still need to sit down with council member Moss and go through some things, but.
What are you looking at for furnishings? What are we, time to upgrade some things?
Well, I don't know about you guys, but these chairs are incredibly uncomfortable. I would like to replace these if that would be okay. Some of them are not functioning properly. So those are some of the furnishings I'm looking at. We've got a couple of desktop computers that have reached their, their life, and so I need to replace a couple of desktop computers. We, we try and replace those, not all at once, but you know, over, over a couple of years, replace them. I don't remember what all I have in there. I'd have to go back and, and look and see.
Great. So I will, again, just ask you very directly, please ask questions. At the next council meeting, we will be adopting our tentative budget, and that will be.
17th.
17th of May, and then we'll meet on the June 1st, June 7th?
June 4th, well.
And then, then the possibility is we have a conflict and possibly meet the 14th, so we do the first and the second, so the first and the third in June.
First and.
First and second, the first is the 7th and the second Tuesday would be the 14th. Okay. We're going to move on unless I have any objections. We're going to move on to item number 6, which would be to review, approve the minutes from the previous meeting, which is April 19th. I had a chance to review them, they look great, good job.
I have a question.
Yep.
At some point, it was Flo that caught, it was Flo that caught that there was an error in the titling of it. It wasn't me. Uh, no, of the, one of the, was it either, it was one of the ordinances, it was, it was Flo, not me.
The number.
And I don't remember which, there were two, and I, I can't remember which of the two, but it gives me credit for fixing something I don't think I deserve. So I'm wondering if we could, and I, I can't remember which, which one it was.
Okay.
It's not, I, I didn't correct it.
Yeah, she didn't, she didn't correct.
Do you remember where it's at, Eileen?
I, well, I highlighted my knee because I don't think, I think that's where it was. I think it was Flo that made that correction. So if you go down, you'll see a yellow highlight because I just did that. And I think that should say Flo.
Great.
You okay if I fix that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you fixing it then?
I am. Yeah. I, no. I, no, I don't.
Great.
Flo, Flo, Flo did the good catch.
So one, two, three, four, five little paragraphs up, it says ordinance 2022 dash zero zero two re, rezoning?
Regarding, uh, re.
Is that, is there a?
And it's like re vaccine and re.
Okay, sorry.
City business, it says it on all, both of them.
Okay.
Re vaccine? It's just, uh,
Re rezoning.
Yeah, regarding rezoning.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
As corrected?
As corrected.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
Thank you, Eileen.
Second.
Second from Diane. All in favor of approving the minutes as corrected on, for April 19th, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. I need to excuse, uh, council member Anderson. Um, he's got a prior engagement. Uh, but we're going to move on to item number seven, which is the consent calendar, uh, fiscal year 2021. Do you have anything you'd like to present, Eileen? Excellent. Before you go, is there anything you'd like to present?
Thank you.
Excellent. Uh, we're going to move down to item number nine, which is the city council reports. I don't have anything to report other than let's be nice to each other. The world's already bad enough. Good heavens. We can be the city of good neighbors and be nice to each other. I'm serious. Just be nice. Just wrap your arms around someone, give them a hug and say, thanks for living in our city.
I sure like you.
Thank you, Eileen. City council reports, George?
Um, nothing at the moment. Well, I actually feel like there is something that's from the
There is, 4th of July, what's going on? Parade, what's going on?
We're meeting tomorrow. So nothing more than what I reported last time about getting the unsung hero. Hope that was something I was supposed to ask for tonight.
Okay.
I have a name.
Do we, is there a formal nomination process with that?
It's not necessarily formal. Normally the person, the liaison has taken kind of charge and, and asked for nominations and, and kind of ran with it. Um, if you would like to, you can do it. If you would like to defer that, um, I don't mind helping out and kind of stepping you through the process, um, and working with you on that, if that's something you would like to do.
Super. Um, all the help I would not turn down. And then they were, I was asked if we wanted to post that on Facebook or social media for nominations.
Um, we haven't in the past. It's kind of been more backdoor. We're not trying to get people to post things how awesome they are. Or publicly post why they think a person should receive it. We've kind of, and they've come out really well in the past of, of just reaching out to neighbors and, and teach, reaching out to people in your neighborhood and, and asking them instead of going more public about it.
Okay.
There's plenty of people. The city's awesome. It really is. I'll work with you on that. Thank you, George. Brandon, can we get some of that terrible taffy, the second taffy? The jalapeno taffy?
Why does he want the terrible taffy?
You want the, you want the mango pepper taffy?
Yes, that was awesome. It was the cheapest stuff ever and it saved us a lot of money.
We've ordered, we've ordered. I, you just need to tell me how many.
Lots.
Not very much. One, one bag.
We'll do, we'll do the same amount as we did last year, if that's okay.
Okay, great.
How many boxes was that?
10?
Yeah, 10 boxes.
The parade is fun. I hope our residents go out there. It's a lot of fun. Um, Diane, do you have anything to report?
I don't tonight.
Excellent. Eileen?
So I want to
You've got something, you've got a craw up your
Ooh.
Let's hear this.
I've, I've, um, I've spoken with, um, Brandon a little bit and I, I keep saying that we need to, to use carrots, not sticks to, um, to get as many people to, uh, to conserve water as we can. And so, um, I asked George if he would have the youth city council put together a, a few things. And then I would like to add to it with some, some things that, that the, um, Weaver Basin has, um, put out for conserving water. We need 50 ways to save your water. And, um, we're going to put some asterisks by some of them because I, I think, um, telling your, your teenager to go shower at their neighbor's house so that they, that you can, you can have a chance at the drawing and they can't is, you know, probably something we need to put an asterisk by. But just some, a little levity with, uh, maybe 10 of the things. And, um, and then, um, what I'm proposing is that we have a, a, a quarterly, um, um, drawing with the people. Anybody who has saved 10% of, of their water bill, um, over the previous year, um, can be added to our drawing. And, um, Brandon suggested that an easy thing to do might be for the top three to get a little credit on their water bill. And then maybe the next, uh, 10 people after that, we continue to draw and, and we, um, have a youth city council put a sign in all the first three as well. But a youth, uh, city council have a, develop a slogan, uh, for, for something we could put on a sign. Um, you know, Davis County puts out there that says a soccer player lives here. Why not have a water saver lives here? And, um, and then have, so the youth city council do that every quarter and, um,
Oh, every month.
Well, I, I don't want it to be overbearing. And so if I,
But we're only looking at four. June, July and August.
Well, no, year round. This is, we have to conserve culinary water year round.
Yes, but what we learned last week or last time from Darren is that it's
It's mostly the summer.
Exponentially higher in the summer.
Again, that's fine if, if, if you think the youth city council is, is up to that. Or, or maybe what we could do is do it every month in the summer and then in the winter do it quarterly.
Okay.
Um, and, and then just have some, I mean, it's silly, but it would make people aware. So it's a little bit of an outreach. We put that, we put our 50 ways in, in the newsletter. We, um, we announce our, our contest if, as you would, and, uh, and we start it on June 1st.
Well, and, and I'd be happy to help with signs. I like the idea of, of really punching it early. So maybe doing it for the next six months.
Yeah.
And then doing it, you know, do it every month.
I just don't want it to wear on the youth city council.
Yeah, well, and I'm happy to help, uh, put out signs. I think that that's an awesome way.
If we can get the youth city council to do it. One of the things that, um, as George mentioned, is some of our biggest water wasters are, are the youth who's, who think that they're supposed to sing an offer while they're in the shower, not twinkle, twinkle little star. And, um,
I have one of those. He probably doesn't want to be mentioned here though, public meaning.
And so the more we can get the youth involved, uh, and get some buy on front on the youth. Um, so I would like to run with this if we could.
I would love it. I, I wouldn't, I would be more than willing to help out as much as we can. Um, because the youth city council are going to turn over here in
Yeah.
In a couple of weeks.
And if we need to go place some signs, we could. I was just thinking what we could do is we could make, you know, we could get, we could get maybe two dozen of the kind of election signs that we use. And then each time we're, we're going to take them out and put them on somebody else's lawn, but they'll wear out. So if we just ordered a, a couple dozen of, of them, um, just that size with the little wire things and we just moved them from lawn to lawn every, every time we have a new contest.
I love it.
I, I think it's great, Eileen.
Okay.
I like celery and not carrots. Is that possible?
Yes.
Can we do that?
Yes.
Because there's, there's some people who are allergic to carrots.
Okay. Celery's fine.
Okay.
Celery is
The metaphor doesn't work with celery.
Yeah.
No.
Celery doesn't work, the metaphor.
But celery is not, it's digestible.
Mayor, if you will save 10% of your water, I, I'll, I'll personally bring you some celery.
You're awesome.
So great.
Goofball.
So, and Brandon tells me that this is not a hard thing to do, to go in and, and just have a, have colet and we can, we can have it printed and then put it in a hat. We can bring it here to city council, the second city council meeting each month and or, uh, and have, have it drawn out.
Ms. Taylor?
You know, you said putting on your, um, what, water?
Super water saver or something?
Or water hero?
Yeah, water hero. Uh huh.
Grass hater.
Even for the city, um, award winner, so that people ask
There you go.
How did you get that award? And then there's a discussion.
Yeah, I love it. Love it.
That's good. Thanks, Jim.
Yeah. So we just
Didn't have just dropped those water.
Pictures only, not real drops.
Maybe we just like get a bunch of celery and just drop it on their front porch.
But the other thing, Mayor, as I was, as we're thinking about it, for those extra 10 people, if we could do some kind of a trinket. I know, Brandon, we used to have those little stickers about, you know, that, um, things that go in the pipes and, and, uh, and, you know, so, so kind of maybe it'll just even just a little piece of bling that we can deliver with the sign.
Maybe a magnet.
Yeah.
A piece, a piece of, sorry, I didn't
Some bling.
Bling?
Bling.
Oh.
You know, something, something that we give to them that, that, you know, we used to have the stickers about what the sewer company didn't want in the, in the pipes.
Yeah.
If we have something with a water conservation and we, we maybe make a little sticker and we put a, buy a bunch of pens or something like that. We just have a little pen and a sticker.
Bling for here at the office.
Well, no, bling to, to deliver with our 10 signs.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. I recognize you.
For saving water token.
Okay.
Just a small token.
Okay.
Love it. Thank you so much, Eileen.
Thank you.
Jeff Euler?
I just wanted to let you know that I requested Brandon budget for that lunch you owe me. Now, I don't know if that'll get in the budget, but I think that's something that people could get excited about. Could be a highlight.
That's actually something you owe me, my friend. Thank you, Jeff Euler. Darren, do you have anything to say?
You got, I, uh, told us that it would be done, it would be well.
Well, Rocky Mountain Power got out and the next day you have 40 people there. They're working like crazy to get that sucker done. No, as soon it was, as soon it was done, you have trucks pulling dirt and moving things. It's, you can tell when it was done.
You should see Kurt's, he had a turn.
I think it already went in.
We're there. Mark said we're finished.
Gotcha.
You guys are starting ready. They're all finished. Um, we're on asphalt today. We're just starting more road base, so.
Is that our road that we have to maintain after this is, construction is done? Is it, and is it being done to our standards? Okay. Great, thank you. Haley, do you have anything to say? Brandon, why don't you enlighten us with some great news? Because we love each other.
Um, the Ridge Runner went out and in the Ridge Runner, you're going to see some things on water conservation. And, uh, one of the other things you're going to see is the city is really pushing hard to get residents to move over to paperless billing. Mayor Pullman and I discussed this and then also had a staff meeting and discussed it with the staff on ways that we can incentivize or get people to move over. Mayor Pullman had an idea and I didn't follow back up with you, Mayor. But that wasn't going to work because they actually have to go in and sign up to, to make that option that you had, I had discussed. So we fell back to what we'd, uh, talked about as a staff and that is those that sign up for paperless billing will receive on one utility bill, a credit of $5 for signing up for that service. And we'll do that for the next three months. And then after that, um, there will be a small charge placed on those who continue to want a, a paper bill. Right now, we're currently at about 45% of our residents who are on paperless. And we'd like to, we'd like to push that further. And the reason for doing that is, is numerous, but mostly a savings, a savings in, in mailing and preparation costs. This would just be mailed out, emailed out through, uh, through, uh, express bill pay. We will be, we have not yet.
Thank you, Brandon. Is there anything else?
Is that okay?
That's great.
You're welcome. Nothing unless you have something for me.
Um, sorry, the last item, June, we have a conflict with the third Tuesday. I presented that before. The proposal or the idea would be to either do one meeting in June. I think we should reserve the first Tuesday and the second. And we're off the third and fourth, um, because there might be budgetary questions and we have to approve the final budget before the end of June. So I'm proposing that we meet the 7th and the 14th. Okay? That's fine. Right?
I'm gone both of those Tuesdays. I'm sorry.
Okay. We're going to cancel all of June. June is off. In fact, let's just take July off too.
You better approve the budget right now then.
We'll discuss it next week and two weeks. Is that all right? Um, that is the end of the, the agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion for my lane? Second from Diane. All in favor of approving the motion to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It is 8:06. Thank you for being with us.